Okay, ready. It is, selectmen's meeting will open at 7:02 this evening. The selectmen meetings are subject to be videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. Okay, got an agenda. Looks pretty heavy, but I think we can deal with it rather quickly, actually. The item number one, we have an appointment with the Cable Access Station manager, Brittany Blakely.
Blaney. At 7:10.
Oh, excuse me, sorry about that. Sorry about that, I was just going by that.
Just in case people saw it posted.
Yeah, okay.
I'm gonna go step out and make a call back.
Okay.
Okay, number one, approval of meeting minutes. I looked at, you know, I looked at the last three.
Didn't get through all of them.
I looked, I didn't bother frankly looking at the earlier ones because, you know, I know Mary takes more copious notes than my view are necessary, so I'm sure they're not missing anything, but I wouldn't remember anyway if I reviewed them. So, I looked at past, the other, the last three, and I was perfectly satisfied with them.
Well, wanna hold on to them?
But you wanna hold on to them?
No, you can take a vote.
Okay, so, I would accept the motion to accept the minutes as presented to us by email.
So moved.
Motion been made and seconded to accept the eight.
Nine.
Nine, uh, meeting minutes that Mary has, the secretary has sent us, and, um... Are there any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is it a vote?
No. Okay, about halfway. Yeah.
That's what I asked her. Approval of accountant time off request. And, let me see. Do we have that in writing, Mary?
Yeah, yeah, should be.
Oh, what am I, what do I get, there's the yellow package.
That's the appointments.
Appointments.
So these are the minutes.
And here's June.
Okay, and who's June, all right. The town accountants would like to take a vacation Monday, September 7th through Friday, September 11th.
Is it Monday a holiday?
Yep.
It's Labor Day.
Yes, it is.
So, she can't count that as a vacation day, 'cause she gets it paid anyway.
Right. Well...
Just as a...
She asked for it, this is what she asked for, she wanted to go to September 12th or something, I wouldn't care frankly, but, um, she will do the warrants on Friday, September 4th, which is due on Monday, the Labor Day holiday, so she knows it's a holiday. If there are any problems, please let me know. Do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Second, motion been made and seconded to allow the town accountant to take vacation dates from September 7th to September 11th. Any further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's a vote. Approval of 2015 licenses. What do we've got here? Number one, excuse me, Jennifer Sirmak down at the Berlin Farms for a Certified DBA Commander license for the sale of frozen desserts, ice cream mix, confectionery soda water, of fruit on the Lord's Day, and not valid in any other location. Should I go through all of these relative to her?
There's just two for her, it's a...
Just two are for her?
Yep.
Okay, and the second one is for Jennifer Sirmak, DBA, doing, at Berlin Farms. Uh, here, is hereby granted a common vicula's license in said Berlin, and at the place only, it's, and, and at that place only and expires on December 31st. So these are two licenses to her, do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Second, motion been made and seconded to grant Jennifer Sirmak, DBA, Berlin Farms, a license for the sale of frozen desserts on, um, the Lord's Day, and also a common vicula's license, any further discussion, hearing none, take a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's a vote.
She's a little late, if it expires in December, shouldn't she?
Um, the ice cream actually was, is, is, um, May 1 to May 1, and that was partially because I'm transitioning to not sending out notices anymore. I'm telling all the license holders that the forms are available on the website to download. So, it's partly me, same with the next one.
So much for Jennifer. Next one. Berlin General Store. There's two licenses here, one is a common vicula's license in the town of Berlin for the Berlin General Store, and the second one is a license of sale of frozen desserts on the Lord's Day, similar to what we just granted Jennifer. Then, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second, motion been made and seconded to grant these two licenses for a Berlin General Store. Any further discussion, hearing none, will take a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
When I was in the House, Tommy McGee was the Speaker. They called him Fast Gavel McGee. He'd say, he'd go through that so fast, you couldn't even follow him, said, hearing none, having to bang, take a vote.
That's slightly suspicious, isn't it?
Berlin General Store. So that's just those two, okay.
That's it, yep.
Item three, item four. Approval of a residential driveway permit for Mike Sawyer's location at 179 Linden Street. Mike Sawyer mailing address, wasn't that probably on Linden Street? Note, non-residential driveways require site plan review. This has been signed by the police chief, the building inspector, and James Spinney, who is acting highway foreman, uh, who's the highway foreman, acting as superintendent.
He brought that in today and said that Mike Sawyer was hoping to get this done before Keith gets back on Friday, and I can chase Keith down for his signature on Friday, but then Keith knew about this in advance, just technically didn't sign it in advance of going on vacation.
So what is this for?
Well, Mike bought the Ford place up on Linden Street.
Right.
This is the house, this is the existing drive. There's an apartment going upstairs, so he's proposing, there is a driveway there. Well, I think it's just lawn, but they're proposing a driveway probably for that apartment.
For the other side of the unit.
Yeah.
Okay.
And also the third pad, which is farther up to the top of the page there.
Oh, so, okay, yeah, so there's two, all right.
Yeah, two new ones, so the three total.
Okay.
One's a parking driveway, just to park cars in.
Propose drive park.
The chief of police is here, he signed off on it, Larry said...
Took a look at it, there was some issues initially with some sight lines, with some vegetation, and Mike took care of that for us.
So you're happy with it?
Yeah, it's a straight stretch of road, really no problems.
So moved.
Second, motion been made and seconded to grant Mike Sawyer a driveway permit for 129, is it 121? 79 Linden Street. Any further discussion, hearing none, will take a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's a vote. Mike Sawyer. Okay, it is 7:11, and we will deal with the appointment. Brittany, for the Cable Access, have a seat.
Sure, no problem.
May I join you?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
No problem.
Glad you recognized it.
Yes. So, um, we've been presented, Cable Access has been presented with an opportunity to have a intern co-op student from ASABET, from their, um, visual communications department. So we would love to have them, um, ASABET pushes for the kids to have paid positions. The Cable Access Board is in favor of that, however, um, there is nothing in their budget allocated for payroll. So, they have funds, however, there's nothing, um...
What are the funds in? I mean, what is the category that they show up in?
We have a revolving account, and we have an equipment account. The, we brought this issue in front of the selectmen many times, saying, we're looking to bring on paid folks, and the only vehicle we have is 1099 to bring them on, are you on board with that? And the answer's been yes, on several occasions, so...
So if they're a 1099, then you can pay them?
Yes.
Yes.
And do they meet the 1099 qualifications? There are qualifications to have an employee be a 1099 through the federal government.
Right.
Did you talk to June?
We did speak with June.
Okay.
Yes.
And did she say?
She was against using a 1099.
The interpretation from Cable Access Center to Cable Access Center seems to vary. People are probably bending the rules, um, so, yeah.
I know that, um, actually, we visited this in West Boylston, and the West Boylston's labor attorney said that, um, it could be a 1099 because...
I think you can't tell them what to do, they can't have regular, I mean, there's a whole list of things.
Right, 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 it was something, I don't remember exactly, it was something about because they were getting something in exchange, but, uh, you know, obviously that's up to you guys, um... Yeah, so I'm, I'm here...
When do you have to tell ASABET?
Uh, well, they would be starting school pretty soon, so probably within the next couple weeks, we have to make a decision. You know, I'm sure, we can take them on as a intern, unpaid intern, um, but, uh, we would like to, to compensate them for their work. So, that's kinda like where we're stuck right now.
So, I guess amendments to the revolving accounts rules are, can only, should only be made at special town meeting, I mean, at annual town meeting. You, I'm kinda speaking on words, but you, June told you...
Yeah, June said that we would have to, uh, it would have to go before town meeting in order to make changes to, yeah.
Didn't she say it had to be annual?
She did, she checked it out.
I have kind of a, um, mixed view of it frankly. You know, on its face, fine, also, but also, um, you know, I know kids that are interning for zero for judges, going to law school, um, people get a lot of benefit out of getting that on their resume and learning. It's a great benefit to them. Certainly, I hope you get an unpaid, get her to do an unpaid, number one, but if we, if we're up against it on, uh, is that a big deal, not paying, or, I have no problem with the $10 either, but...
Can the selectmen pay for it out of your funds? I mean, do you have rules, do you have any discretionary cash that you can just pay them with?
No, our slush fund is empty.
Your slush fund is empty?
We don't have any discretionary money.
Judy went to California last week, you know.
We promise we'll pay you back.
Yeah, I think, I think, I'm, I'm not confident that we would have an intern or a co-op student without pay. Uh, I had offered unpaid, um, you know, position to the kids when they were still in school, if they were interested, and no one was interested, and then, when we started offering compensation, then there was some interest.
Sure. So on the kids.
So I think when the money goes away, the students will as well.
If you have a choice between unpaid internship or, and you need to earn money, you're gonna go work at McDonald's for nine bucks an hour, if that's, well...
Can we run out the year until the next annual town meeting, doing 1099s? With intent of fixing the problem next year.
Well, I mean, maybe you can come up with the wording that they used, so you're saying in West Boylston, they're paying them as 1099s through their, and their tax attorney?
I wanna see you get the intern, so if we can do it.
Legally?
Right, 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 um...
What will she be doing, what will this intern be doing?
Um, covering town events, editing, um, basically stuff that I do, just more.
Are there a certain number of hours they need to work every week?
There's no, um, requirement, um, they can, well, they have to put in, I think it's 25 hours of work per week. However, that doesn't necessarily have to be on site, so if they only worked five hours here, they just need to do the other 20 at school, they need to be doing some sort of coursework or whatever.
So you'd be in charge of her or him?
Uh, yeah, I would be directing them, you know, with guidance from the board.
Is this, um, Nusshofer?
No, ASABET.
I mean, Asbet, yeah, okay. What do you think, Judy?
Well, I mean, if they can, if she can find something, if they've had a lawyer who said, because of this, we think you could 1099 it, then I'd be fine with it, but...
I can, there's a whole, it's a four-page thing, but, in conclusion, the, the labor attorney had said, based on a review of the foregoing factors, under the totality of the circumstances test set forth by the Department of Labor Standards, the town can make a legitimate argument that the program operates in conjunction with, conjunction with the local vocational school would constitute an educational training program under Massachusetts law. Accordingly, the student participating in the program would likely be considered an intern slash trainee and not an employee.
So can you email that to Mary?
Yeah, sure, but, I mean, it's West Boylston, but...
Yeah, but, I mean, we're...
They're arguing stable, and they're arguing interpretation of...
Well, I would, I would say that, I would trust Bill and Tiffany to, um...
Brittany.
Brittany.
All right.
Tiffany.
That would've been my brother's name if he was a girl.
To, um, make that decision and not get us into trouble, you know, if you can find out that's right, Mary.
I just sent to Mary.
The, the statement of, you know, your, of your wishes.
That's what she said she wants.
June wants a statement from the selectmen saying that we think they should be a 1099.
That you approve them...
That prove them becoming a 1099.
Right, I'll accept a motion on that.
Well, I'm not gonna make a motion until I read this letter, see what it says, and if it looks like it's valid, then I would make the motion.
When's the next meeting you have in?
Our?
No, uh, selectmen, when's that next meeting?
Oh, September 8th.
8th, okay, well, that can wait, you can wait.
Can you wait till the 8th?
I believe so, yeah.
Eight and a half again.
I mean, we have to, we have to, um, what was I gonna say? But, moving forward, for the next time, or whatever, addressing it, should we pursue, should the Berlin Cable Access pursue adding that language?
Yes, because it would give you more flexibility.
Okay, yeah, so that's something we'll discuss at the next meeting.
Yep.
So we don't...
If they're making an employee for fiscal year 17, they would create a job description too, yes?
Well, I mean, I think for budget reasons, first, it's not necessarily an employee, but if they have a line item that's for part-time help, then...
Right.
You could always create a, what do you call it, job description for someone, if you... But right now, you don't have that ability, because you don't have a line item. So, yeah, so, yeah, definitely pursue it.
Okay, and then we'll plan for the 8th visit?
Yep.
Put them on the agenda for the 8th, Mary.
No, it must be the 7th, oh, no, the 8th, because of Labor Day. All right.
All set?
I believe so.
I think you've got your answer.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have a hearing scheduled, or a licensed public hearing scheduled for 7:15, it is now 7:22. And we will have the hearing, so, um, and selectmen will continue it.
So you're now gonna open the hearing?
So we will open the hearing at 7:22. And the hearing is for a used car dealer's license, class two, to buy and sell second-hand motor vehicles at 343 Old Central Street. Garage located at 343 Old Central Street, no more than six cars, subject to the same, as a ZBA stipulated at a hearing on March 20, 2010. Okay, wanna talk to us about it? I have here a legal notice that was published.
That's right.
The item...
Where is this located?
You know, the Dunkin' Donuts is your side of 195?
Yes.
They pack my parking lot.
Okay, I thought that was owned by Cumberland Farms now.
I lease from Cumberland Farms.
Okay.
So you have been before the Board of Appeals, and they said...
That was ours, taking care of 2010.
Sure.
They allowed the use of repairs and sales.
I see the paper.
Because I didn't apply for the license right then, and now I'm doing it now, I had to go through the whole thing all over. But, uh, which I have, I mean, Mary's helped me through it, and, uh, I think we've got everything that we need. We did your butters list?
Oh, yeah, can I have that, your butters list and the green cards?
Get that, I got it. Everything came back, except for...
One undeliverable?
Well, it's actually 200, they don't have a mailbox, and they're, what's her name, Sharon, uh...
It's fine.
Community glasses.
Fantillo?
They live on that little dirt road. Sharon Smalley in Joseph Road, 16 Stones Corner Road, it's just a dirt path, there's nothing there.
I take the unopened ones too, just as proof that you attended, so...
Yeah, yeah, so, I guess...
Yep, six of all of that, and...
Yeah, it's all on... You wanna...
Yeah.
Alexia too, okay.
So it was decreased from 10 to 6 cars?
Thomas, if you wanna copy this...
Originally, yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna copy if you want.
Okay.
All right, and you've been through the Board of Appeals?
Yes.
And what does the chief of police think about this?
They have no problem.
It's a parking lot, it's, you know, they're just gonna be parking six more cars there.
Okay.
I don't see this as gonna be a huge increase in traffic and flow, and it'd cause a major problem.
All right, um...
Plus, overflow's gonna be on the other side of the building, so it's, just, just the front line cars will be on that side.
So are you still gonna be parking Dunkin' Donut cars over there too?
They, they pack in that one row next to Dunkin', Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay.
Okay, and I have the rental agreement for the rest of the parking lot. We worked out well, sort of five years, we haven't had any problems.
So you already have, yeah?
Yeah. The big trucks come in, the cellars and them, and they always ask, okay, what can I do, go ahead, just don't block me.
All right. Are you in a butter?
No, I'm not.
Nothing to do with us, okay?
No, I do not.
You look like you're ready to complain about something, so...
I'm pro-commerce, I'm for it.
All right. I mean, the Board of Appeals has gone through that, have you, but you, it took a deal this long to apply for the license?
Well, I got it all approved, and I went through the financial...
Okay.
Level, okay?
Yeah.
And then there's some health problems, and I finally snapped back out of it.
Okay, good for you.
And I wanna get a little bit more, and I'm doing bulwark anymore, I can pick up cars, and...
Yeah.
And I'm not a, I'm not a used car salesman.
Okay.
I'm a guy that sells good cars to good people. I had a license in Marlboro for 35 years, never had a complaint, never had a, a bond issue, insurance issue, or anything.
Okay.
So Cumberland Farms knows you're doing this?
Yes, they do, they've been notified, I have contact with them besides, so...
There's a bond in here?
Nope, bond's right here.
Okay.
There was my next question. Okay. Because they can't fax us the original bond, this is all the paperwork on it, and, uh, because it's embossed, you know, upon...
Yeah, yeah.
So they can't, but the original bond will be sent directly here, and, uh, by, by the end of the week, but this is all the paperwork on it.
Okay.
So just condition of the bond received immediately?
That's correct. So what you receive...
From your insurance agency, Hudson, Mass.
Once, uh, you receive the bonds and everything else, then I'll, I'll come up and see you, and I'll get the, get a license if it's approved.
Well?
Oh, I don't have a problem, as long as it's, you know, we get the bond.
Um, if, I mean, you can look at that, I, it sounds to me like it's a done deal. Did you look at Owen, Mary?
Mm-hmm.
So you've been through the Board of Appeals, you have a good history, and you've got, and you're bonded?
That's right, plus I got li- liability insurance with the garage anyways.
Okay.
The couple of files made sure.
Yeah, I would imagine.
Okay.
Joe, move.
I make a motion that we approve the auto sales, auto station sales, class two motor vehicle license at 343 Old Central Street, conditional upon receiving a surety bond, what is...
It's a class two dealer's bond.
Class two dealer bond?
Yep.
Would it, um, before I second, would it kill you to wait until the next selectmen's meeting, which is the 8th of September?
In a way, yeah, I've, I've been stretched out now for four, five months already.
All right, well, I'll second that motion. So the motion's been made, seconded to, to issue the, um, class two license for 343 Central Street, contingent upon receipt of a $25,000 bond. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. You're in favor, no kidding?
I, I go to a lot, I go to a lot of meetings with veterans and everything else, so I'm used to this.
Okay. Disposal with that.
Yeah, put them over there, I got coffee. So we all set?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mary is not in on Friday, so...
Well, whenever, it might be in on Thursday, I'll, all I know, they said it'll probably be in here, because they have to do it by mail, because of the idea that it's embossed.
I was just telling you that, if you came over, you'd find the door closed.
I gave you the number though, yeah, so I emailed you the number of the license number, you said you needed that.
Yes, yes, it's, it's gonna, it's on, matter of fact, it's on the application too.
Yeah, okay, good.
It's all on, 15-39.
That's it.
Okay, and thank you, Mary, us two working together to get through this.
I know it's painful, you got it done though, thanks.
Thank you, good time.
Yep.
Okay, um, we have another hearing scheduled for 7:30, for the 110 Grill to be located at Highland Commons. And the request is for, um, an all-alcohol restaurant license hearing, also common vicula, entertainment, Sunday entertainment licenses, so there's four, maybe CD.
No ice cream. No ice cream.
No ice cream, right.
Mike on the dessert menu.
Okay, you wanna talk to us about that?
Sure, so thank you very much, I appreciate it, for the record, Attorney Kevin Erickson, on behalf of the 110 Grill. We're proposing a 5,800 square foot restaurant to be situated in a building in front of Cabela's at Highland Commons, with a 1,200 square foot outdoor patio area.
Is that actually right in front of it, or kinda different?
It's, um, let me show you.
Oh, it's not built yet?
It's not built yet.
So is it on that pad that's on the side there?
Yeah, if you go in the BJ's entrance and come up and go in, it's right there, at first.
Oh, okay.
That's right, that's right, I do have a plan.
All right, well, it's just, that's good enough for me.
It's up by BJ's, you say?
No, well, it's by, you know, by, if you come in that first entrance to Highland Commons.
Right.
It's more by Cabela's.
It is in front of Cabela's.
It's known as the V building on the Highland Commons.
It's on the right side of Cabela's, if you were staring straight ahead at Cabela's?
Yeah, so we are a, um...
So we are a, an American grill, we have two locations right now, one in Nashua and one in Chelmsford. And we're rolling out, if all goes well, another two locations in addition to this one, which will be in Hopkinton and Acton. So, so we're moving to different areas, and we're very excited about coming to Highland Commons. We think we're going to be a nice addition there, we think it'll be great.
It'll be good because there's no restaurants.
Exactly, exactly. So I have, you know, this is just for your informational purposes, but this is, you know, sort of our. Marketing brochures, I have menus as well.
You can give one of these to Mary.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And, you know, that's what we would hand out to groups, we also do catering.
Mm-hmm.
The entertainment that we do is generally limited to one night, sometimes two nights a week. And it's usually a single performer, sort of an acoustic guitar on a patio.
Mm-hmm.
And we also have TVs inside, you know, in the, in the bar area.
Mm-hmm.
And we have a commercial Pandora music license for the inside, so we occasionally will use that as well. But we're, you know, we're a sit-down, we're an upscale casual restaurant is what we like to bill ourselves as. The prices are very reasonable, but the, the quality affair is, you know, something what you might see at like a Burton's.
Now, does this have a separate bar?
Uh, it does, it has a bar area, yep.
Okay.
Um, it's sort of in the center of the restaurant. I did include a seating chart, I think.
Yeah.
With my application, so you can get an idea of the layout, and for some reason it's not in this back end.
You have a copy of the seating chart in there?
I'm looking for some, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, can I take? Or I should say the restaurant layout.
It isn't built yet, so you can't.
You can't take a tour, unfortunately.
So you're going to have a private dining room also that you can rent out?
Yes, that's right, you can do functions at our restaurant, yep.
Okay.
We do that in Chelmsford and Nashua now.
That's the by attribute.
You're going to be open by fast ten o'clock? So the entrance.
We have a few means of ingress and egress, but primarily, I'm trying to get oriented with this.
There's a door here.
There is.
Is this the bar?
This is probably, see this right here, this is the main entrance with the vestibule area, and I think this faces Cabela's, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so you would, this looks like it's the.
There's seating there, yep. And.
Total capacity.
Some of these are high tops, I have that too. We are proposing. Apologize.
Have you seen all this?
I have.
Uh, seating capacity of two thirty, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, here's a, here's Cabela's here, and that's it, stuck right out there.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen that. It's by the boats.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Good visibility, I think.
Can I take those and put that back in the application? Thank you.
So. Plans and everything, is it, do you have a building permit yet?
Well, Benderson Contractors is handling the initial build out, and then we will be doing the fit up.
Okay.
So I, I don't know if they've pulled the building permit as of yet, but they may have.
Okay. So it's all depending on whether you get these licenses or?
That's correct, yep.
So, do we issue these contingent upon the final?
I think the ABCC is going to have to come take a look at the final.
Okay.
Built restaurant, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Um, and.
What are your hours on these for entertainment for?
So it, it varies, they're, they're slightly different in Chelmsford and Nashua, but what we right now do in Chelmsford, we're, Sunday to Wednesday, we're open eleven thirty AM to nine PM, okay? And on Thursday through Saturday in Chelmsford, we're open eleven thirty AM to ten PM. And that's substantially the same in Nashua, although on Friday through Saturday, we're actually open till eleven PM.
So you said eleven to one for your entertainment license?
Yeah, I, I, we put that range down there.
I should probably put that on the face.
For flexibility purposes.
You just say during regular hours of operation. And then you say for Sunday entertainment, it'd be twelve AM to midnight, so basically the entirety of Sunday.
Yeah, well, it'll never be, but I think during regular hours of operation, you know, that's what we would suggest. We, right now, we don't do much on Sunday, although this, I think it's unique, I don't think we've ever had to go for a separate Sunday license, so we've requested it.
Um, let me ask the Chief of Police if he's looked at so, what you think about it?
No, and I've done some checking with the other, you know, area towns that, you know, where they have their restaurants and they have no problems.
Mm-hmm.
I think, you know, this is a retail district, it's a perfect fit and the perfect location, you know, we're not going to look at with entertainment.
Yeah, if there's any place with loud music, wouldn't it pose on the neighbors?
Exactly, we're not going to look at disturbing neighbors and things like that if there's entertainment.
So in the worst case scenario, it wouldn't be a problem with neighbors or anything?
Especially with their normal hours of operation too, you're looking at the homeless, their normal hours of it, that, that one anyway.
And we're not that type of restaurant, our, our entertainment really is, is relatively subdued and relaxing. It's, like I said, it's usually a solo performer with an acoustic guitar.
Willie Nelson.
Willie, it'd be great if he'd come. Can you get him?
I have weird taste.
And so did you look into, so, training for servers for alcohol, I presume they have to go through a program?
So the, the managers will be tips certified.
Mm-hmm.
Ryan Deion is the general manager of the entire restaurant brand, the One Ten Grill, and we'll be doing our hiring for this as we get a little bit closer to opening. We just wouldn't be able to fill the spots right now while they wait for construction. So Ryan Deion will oversee the opening of this one as well, though. And he's overseen the last, the Nashua opening, and prior to that, he has extensive experience with the Burton's Restaurant Chain, and opened three of the Burton's Restaurants, so.
What are you looking for, for a timeframe?
Uh, we would hope to be open Benderson and, and.
That's when they move the wires.
Well.
Is that?
Yeah, a lot of it is dependent on Benderson's ability to get the, the building up and running. And then once we get in there, we move very fast with our fit up. Originally, we were looking at an opening this winter, to be honest with you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if, if we can do that, great, otherwise, I think, you know, we'll open early two thousand sixteen.
What do you think?
I don't have any other questions, seems.
Neither do I. You have any problem with these hours that Mary pointed out here from?
I just keep the language from the application.
From, yeah, hours of operation, eleven AM to, beyond midnight to one AM or?
It's probably to be stated.
Do you have any problem with that, Chief?
No problem with that.
No problem with that.
It's, I think this area is the perfect fit for.
Okay. The Chief has no problem, I don't.
I don't have an issue.
Want to make a, uh, Chair will accept a motion on these, one, on the, I'll accept a motion to grant a Commonwealth Massachusetts.
All alcohol restaurant license?
All, right, here I granted entertainment license.
A Sunday entertainment license, a common vitular license, and an all alcohol license.
You got it.
To One Ten Grill at sixty Highland Commons in Berlin.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I second it. Motion been made, seconded to grant these four licenses. Uh, any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, the Chair will take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so the Form forty-three goes to the ABCC, they, they do an investigation, just like, just did the other two. And then, when that comes back, they can sign the actual license.
Excellent, excellent.
So it takes a little bit.
No, no problem, we have a little bit of time.
They don't have a building yet.
We know what the building is.
Some electrical conduit that needs to be moved up there, that's.
Yeah.
Um, I'll leave this here, I don't need them, so if anyone wants them or anyone in the town offices wants them, that's great.
Okay.
We're excited, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a lot, wait for Tom's signature, anyway, there's a Chairman.
I can wait, yeah, I'll put.
Yeah, there's, there's no rush on this, yeah. Chairman's signature.
I'm going to put these in a pile, even though this is the one that Tom needs to sign.
Okay. Yeah, keep all that to give us a check, so I can just, I can take all that once if you want.
Is this an actual check?
Yep. That has to go to the ABCC with their application. Yeah, I'll keep the whole thing together.
Okay.
Want me to keep those too?
Yes, please. Uh, let me take that one.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that. Okay. Okay. Let me see. Eight fifteen, we have one, so.
Eight o'clock, we have one.
Eight o'clock, okay. So going to item five.
She fall asleep?
No.
Go for it.
I like her favorite.
Oh, yeah.
She gave it away.
Treatment.
She gave it to her wigs for kids.
Did she? Oh, what a nice.
She's a good, good kid.
So item five, approval of central master, you can plan a commission for your oil pool requirement.
Do you want me to tell you a little bit about it, or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so the town of Berlin indicated, I think with seven other communities, that they're interested in again buying pooled fuel oil for fiscal year sixteen. The sole bidder was Peterson, they gave back a price per gallon fixed or going with a variable market rate.
Mm-hmm.
Plus point one five over the Boston market rate for fuel oil. And the contract is here for you to sign, but the only lingering issue that the accountant has had is the idea that apparently only to Berlin and to no other town for last year, fiscal year fifteen, Peterson claimed that we overran our per building budget for one of our buildings. I'm not sure if it was eighteen seventy or which one it was, but June, you know, reviewed the contract, said there is no per building cap. We're not sure what you're talking about. At the end of last year, Tom Andrews said, let it ride, because when they say we're out of contract on this building, although we don't agree it existed, the market rate was actually lower than the contract rate, so it worked out in the town's favor at that time. But the concern this year that Tom had before getting into agreement again is making sure that we are clear with Peterson that there is no such thing as a per building cap, that's Janet Pierce says that from CMR PC two, who's, there shouldn't, it shouldn't be. She never heard of it before, and it shouldn't be even in play, it's not in this contract, just like it wasn't in last year's contract. But she's not responded, she was going to talk to the accountant at Peterson Oil, and we, I haven't heard back from her.
Who's chasing it this down, Keith or?
Well, Keith was going to chase on another part, no, Janet Pierce was going to chase this down with Peterson because June and Wendy Renzie from Peterson.
Janet is who?
Janet Pierce is the managing director.
Okay.
Of the, she's the managing director currently.
Okay.
At the CMR PC. Um, I'd gladly take it back and just call them myself and see if we can get clarification on that. Otherwise, I think Tom Andrew wanted some kind of a rider attached to this contract that clarified that there's no.
Well, I mean, it's a contract, and, and I read the, the central mass part, and there's nothing in there that has a cap on it, so. I mean, I don't think we need a rider, I think.
If it ever came to.
We'd end up having to take them to court.
Be nice to clarify though, since they're insisting that.
Well, we can wait another week, right?
Sounds like this can wait to the next selectmen's meeting, okay?
Okay.
So we just pass over that for now.
Put that on next week?
Yes. Um, the other thing though, Keith is going to look into is, that's right, it is two weeks. I asked her to tell me when the deadline for this is, and she wasn't clear in her initial email, but I think, I think you could still take two weeks for that. We're filled up on our tanks. Keith was going to check with Peterson, with Northborough Oil to see if there's any chance that they could match this. But is it too late to be doing that when we've already told CMR PC that we were going to participate?
I kind of think it's too late for that.
What is the ethics of putting out something to bid, and then you get your bid, you open your bids, and then you go and ask someone else?
Yeah, especially because you're not going, you, I mean, Northborough had a, could have bid.
Yep. Well, he, he didn't do it, so if you don't want to bother even with it.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
I'd have to agree with Walter on the ethical part of that.
You would?
Yes, I actually would.
She's catching on.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Enjoy the moment.
Right. Waiver towns, okay, so where are we with that? Are we going to check that or going to work out the?
Hold it for two weeks and make sure I get a response back, and says it's not.
Item six, waiver of towns write a first refusal for seventy-two Village Court. This is another situation where a affordable unit's going up for sale, we have a right of first refusal. The question is, do we want to exercise that right or pass or?
Pass over.
Pass over, all right, been motion been made to pass over our right of first refusal on that unit? I second it, it has been seconded. Any further discussion?
Unless we have a housing authority.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And also, you're voting to set the maximum resale price on the property at one thirty-eight, which is in a number that DEHCD works through with them, yeah.
Okey doke. I think we need to take a vote.
So take a vote on it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seven, acting as personnel committee, discuss wiring inspector, draft job position, pay rate, waiver of fees for town projects, proposed building inspector oversight fees charged, adding to new personal policy. And this goes on and on, this, you know, I, I think central to all of this, we, we ought to look at making the building inspector the kind of in charge of the all inspectors, so that he has some sort of authority on them. I've been hearing stories from fees changing and.
Yeah.
You know, lack of consistency, and I think at least he's going to be around for a couple more years before he retires, and we ought to set that up, and I don't know whether it takes a town meeting vote or whether we can do it or however, but that, I think if we went that way, we wouldn't have these problems in front of us right now.
I agree, we might want to look at how we pay the inspectors.
Mm-hmm. Right, definitely, we want to look at that, I, I think.
So I think we should just table this for.
Okay, it's a, it's a more.
It's much more complex than.
I mean, Mary has gotten some data from other towns and everything, and we've been quite generous with our, our fees and stuff for the, or what the inspectors get out of it, so, but it should be addressed sometime.
Mm-hmm.
So how about, can we set a deadline like the mid of, end of October to deal with this?
Sure.
We'll just, so we'll just keep this on the.
Well, you're going to want to be here if we do this, right?
Absolutely.
So then it needs to be the twenty-eighth of September or later.
So.
We'll be deciding if we have a special town meeting shortly, which we already say September twenty-one's no good, September twenty-eight was a good date. It could be later than September twenty-eighth, but you actually do this with, with Sola.
Right, so we behooves us to get informed on all the details of that between, then have a real in-depth discussion.
Okay.
And deal with it. Okay, item eight. As procurement officers.
Oh, can you go back though, unless you want to skip over this, on number seven B?
Okay, what do we got, adding a new personnel policy?
Adding to the new personnel policy, quarry checks for not just fire, but rescue police and communications personnel.
The fi- the police chief does quarry checks for police, that's not included in.
If the, if the police chief does it for the police, all departments, public safety departments should probably do it.
So Tom, you do quarry checks for your police officers?
Yes.
And any employees?
Yep.
Any opposition to having it be part of the town policy, that all three public safety departments be done annually? Is that just codifying what you already do?
Yeah, the, I mean, I don't do it annually.
Oh, you don't do it annually?
I don't do it annually, I do all of them at hire, and then we're doing them every time they have a pistol permit renewed.
Oh, every five years, oh, okay.
But I don't see a problem doing it annually.
I wouldn't.
Only thing we may want to discuss is whether or not that would become a collective bargaining issue with the union. I don't see it being a problem.
I don't, I don't.
But.
Yeah, when you do it, when you hire them.
Right.
You issue them a pistol permit, you know what's going on anyway.[1793.64]
We know what's going on.
From day to day.
Right.
And every five years is enough. Fire department isn't have to be in touch, in, in close contact with juveniles or...
Oh, you, you can, you can be at any time, especially if we're looking in the future, combining fire and rescue, medical calls. Anytime they go into the fire alarms at the schools, they're doing the safe program in the schools.
Okay.
Senior housing.
They get torrid right now when they get hired. And that's pretty much it.
So, do you want fire added?
Well, I think we should bring fire in and talk to them. When rescue, I mean, rescue, I just did the whole rescue squad earlier. I don't know about communications personnel. You do them too, right?
Same thing, yeah.
Well, they don't have pistol permits, so how often do you...
Right, so they're at, at hire.
But I don't know that, who do they, who do they interact with?
They're, they're not there. I mean, they're just on the follow-up.
Quarry, quarry isn't just to protect against face-to-face, it could be taking advantage for fraud.
Or critical records, things like that, that they're, they have access to.
Praying on a senior who's in need, you know, so if someone ends up having that kind of a track record, I'm not condemning anyone, but...
No, but it's something they, someone makes a phone call and they have a problem.
They have sensitive information, they have social security numbers on the screen.
Right.
Their social security numbers on the screens when they pull up caller ID.
They have access to all, all sorts of critical information, so...
So, what is your recommendation?
Well, I say, Tom is in charge of police and communications, so whatever his recommendation is, that's what it should be for them.
So, it's another meeting on that and the fire, do it on...
Right now, the fire gets done on, on hire.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think they're gonna have a problem and, and rescue just got everybody done recently. I don't know that I think they're gonna have a problem if we say they have to be done yearly. I don't know, do you think...
What, what does it take to do it, Tom? What is the, what is it...
Well, for me, I can do it sitting at my desk.
You log in to the ICORI program, you put in their name, their social security number, their...
Is that public knowledge or is it just the police officer's?
No.
No, that's why it's not, it's not all public record. It's, so I have access to a, the complete state database.
So, it's not a big deal to do it?
No.
Who's qualified in this town to do it?
Well, Judy's the, the quarry officer of the, of town.
Okay.
My turn.
So, you could get on...
The only, the, the, the part that will take time is the getting the forms. Every, every time you quarry someone, you have to get their, if it's within a year, you can use the same form. If it's over a year, you have to get their permission again, either by filling out a new quarry or...
That was two years with the current personnel policy.
Well, it may not be, it may be two years under personnel, but it's one year under the quarry policy, yes.
Form, yeah.
Always has a code.
So, um, that would be the, the time part of it is that you have to keep track of everyone.
Mm-hmm.
And get them to fill the forms out.
Maybe the policy should be updated in that regard too, if it doesn't match state law.
Well, the quarry policy at that, the townhouse right now, I just took off the state's model quarry policy.
The one that's in place was enacted in December two thousand and twelve.
So, Judy, it sounds like you're...
I know, but it's from the state. The state...
The form, you mean, that you use.
The model policy came out of, the state offers a model quarry policy for you.
Yep. I don't know if that, you've ever voted as a personnel committee to say that that's the town's...
So, you don't object to getting these forms every year and going off through this process?
No.
All right, I see no problems. So, is, do we want to establish that policy? That it be a yearly quarry check?
Sure, but I think maybe you should, well, I guess you can just tell the rescue chief that that's the policy we adopted.
We'll do it.
Okay. So, all right, then I make a motion that we change the personnel policy and make quarry checks for rescue, police and communications personnel be annual.
On a annual basis?
Yes.
Okay, I second that. Motion been made and seconded that quarry checks be done on the rescue squad. Um, the, um...
Police and communications.
What was the renewal day, the date of their last quarry check, right? So, first of all, everyone has to get done now, then if they haven't been done in years.
Yes.
They would all be done.
And call fire.
We'd have to get a list of the personnel.
Yep.
You'd make it, and maybe in the language, make it as a condition of reappointment or something along those lines?
Okay, um, motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Here's the vote. So, everybody in the public safety departments will be quarryed annually.
And, and is it conditioned on their reappointment?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Are they all reappointed annually or every three years?
No, annually.
Annually? Okay.
Okay.
Let's say it's conditioned on their having a approved quarry to be reappointed. Or not an approved, a...
Satisfactory.
Satisf, well, I didn't wanna say that under the law. That they've had a quarry within the year or something like that.
That's probably better within the year because then it leaves a little bit of latitude time-wise.
Well, so you don't have to try and do them all within a month, you could do...
Yeah.
Okay, Mary, this, um, anything else under seven? What about see approval or revised job descriptions?
Yep, this is for the part-time janitor.
Oh, yeah.
For the Berlin eighteen seventy Town Hall and the library.
Mm-hmm.
Right now, the library has Steve Bradley doing snow removal on an as-needed basis when there's a snowstorm.
Mm-hmm.
At an hourly rate that, um, the librarian did not bump up his hourly rate to match what Keith is paying him now as an hourly rate to remove snow from eighteen seventy Town Hall. So, he otherwise managed, takes care of both buildings and the inside and removes snow from eighteen seventy. Bob is looking for signature on a letter that personnel approves him bumping him up a step to match what Keith is paying him, Braden Stepwise. He says he has the money in his budget anyhow for snow removal because it's just an estimate of how much he would need for the year anyhow.
Mm-hmm.
And then the, the second paragraph of the letter that approves that also recommends that the library let municipal buildings build into its budget, how much snow removal they needed both buildings, 'cause it's the same employee taking care of the inside and snow removal at both buildings, both of whom, you know, and, and this facility superintendent now manages or evaluates this person. So, putting their, consolidating everything into one line item and one...
So, that's in the next fiscal year.
That would be for seventeen, right, but for sixteen, the library...
But in the meantime...
The librarian would like to bump him up
Yeah.
a step so that he gets the same rate, no matter what building he's working on.
No, it seemed just logical to me. I don't know. What do you think?
It's fine.
Okay. We've got two places to sign here. First one is, um, bumping the library custodian for his snow removal responsibilities up a pay raise, a pay...
Step.
Step to, step eight, fifteen eighty-nine an hour. Correct? Mary?
I don't know what's on my head, but it says I dropped it there.
That's what it says here, you can...
Yep, so it's, that's great. Yep, grade four, step eight.
Okay.
Fifteen eighty-nine an hour.
Fifteen eighty-nine an hour.
Which is what he currently gets at eighteen seventy Town Hall.
Okay, and that's a, for the snow removal. Accept a motion on that?
So moved.
Seconded. So, the motion been made and seconded to bump up Steve Bradley to, um...
The same.
Grade four, step eight, which is fifteen eighty-nine an hour for a snow removal responsibility at the library.
So, this is currently what he's getting at eighteen seventy Town Hall?
Correct.
That's right.
So moved.
So moved. All right, been motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you've signed this one and then the second part. What is this, Mary, again? Twelve hours per week?
That's his, his job description. So, it just says that oversight of the position is...
Oh, this is just, yeah.
So, what's revised in it?
The revision, it is adding who his direct supervisor is. And it just takes the snow removal guidelines that used to exist separately.
That's what you're saying.
It always said job description, see attached guidelines. It puts the guidelines right into the, um, job description.
Now, who is overseeing him right now?
Keith, because Keith evaluates him.
But, I mean, at the library?
You know, it would be to make sure whoever's on duty is satisfied that the outside is not, it's not unsafe.
So, it's not the board of...
It would be the trustees.
The trustees. And did you tell the trustees we were doing this?
I've communicated with both Leanne Lady, the Town Hall manager, and Bob Hodge, the librarian, and I presume he's communicated this to his trustees. Both of them confirmed that they do not have, um, updated job descriptions for Steve at all. So, this is an updated job description that outlines all of his duties between both buildings. The only piece that was separate from municipal buildings was snow, per diem snow removal. And they would estimate what they needed for per diem snow removal at the library and he had a separate line item with Steve's name on it, even though he doesn't evaluate him. And he had him budgeted for this year one step lower by mistake, only because he didn't coordinate with Keith on confirming what the rate per hour is. Uh, he's not looking for oversight over Steve. He doesn't, he doesn't particularly want it. He does want the snow removed, so...
Who is he? Bob Hodge?
Uh, Bob, yep.
So, his inside work is overseen by...
Keith.
Oh, okay, so all of it. You'd be totally under the...
I mean, with, with feedback, I suppose.
Care custody control of the highways superintendent, yeah.
Facilities superintendent, yes.
Facilities superintendent, fine, it's reasonable.
Well, I mean, as long as the library board of trustees knows this, I mean, you don't wanna just take them and move them to someone else.
So, Mary, you're not sure whether they need them?
It's not being moved from them. It's just that the budgeting for that need would be under municipal building instead of being a separate line item under library.
I know, but that's taking...
Yes, it is.
Taking that from...
Bob, Bob's, Bob's seemed to be okay with that, actually.
Okay, well...
'Cause it's an estimate in any event anyhow. If it was a really bad, he, first of all, he didn't come close to that, um, using that up, I guess, this past winter, so it wasn't an issue, so he's just...
No, I don't have an issue with the money or anything else, but the trustees...
You want the library, you wanna wait for the trustees?
Yeah, it's taking the budget.
The trustees are in charge of the library and the budget, so I just wanna make sure that they know.
I thought that Bob would be speaking with authority for the trustees, but maybe he's not. If you feel like you want a writing from the trustees.
So, you wanna wait from the trustees?
Yeah, why don't you just send this over to the trustees and tell them that that's what is being planned on being done?
Yes, okay, you can do that.
And we could sign it?
Next, two weeks, doesn't matter. There's no snow coming, so, right?
Put that on hold.
Certainly hope so.
Okay.
Okay, if you're gonna talk about...
We'd have an eight o'clock with the police chief and the fire chief.
Eight P M hearing with chiefs Galvin and Ricard regarding creation of administrative support post in the implementation of public safety study.
More of what we're here for is kinda trying to move forward.
Mm-hmm. And we should.
Yeah. Um, we've talked, um, we've talked with Denny and, um, one of the things we wanna try and do as the three chiefs is to kinda move the, the public safety study forward because there are gonna be some significant changes. What Bruce and I have talked about and I've proposed to, to Denny as well is that we form a committee of two representatives from each department to kinda start to prioritize things and to work with you whether or not you wanna give us the priorities and to try and work through them, or we start to develop the priorities and bring them back to you and how we're gonna work through them.
I kinda feel like you know more what your departments do and could bring the prior, how you feel the priorities are and bring them back to us.
Well, I think some, some of the things are more easily implemented without much effort on either hand, so those are things we can say, I think we can move forward on three, six and nine or something like that and, or, uh, this is what we feel will be necessary to move forward on one, three and five or something like that.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is gonna be the combining of the agencies and how we do that and that we really need to start to look at getting that done.
Are we gonna wanna wait till next town meeting or have a special town meeting in late winter or...
Well, I thought the presumption was we'd have a special town meeting.
Yeah, I think that's one of the, I think one of the concerns with Bruce's, especially impending retirement before town meeting.
Just me, do the major real... Right, right.
Um, that, you know, it just matters, you know, we, we'd like to get things in order and get organized and, and get processed what we can.
And also look ahead in terms of if, if we need anything on the capital planning end of things in order to implement something.
Yeah, you wanna have that in by the end of the year.
Yes, we need to, we need to sort of start working on some of the stuff. And one of the items is on your agenda was just, just for us to start looking at the, um, implementation of a, a staff person for us to share.
Kind of our kickoff was kind of a way of holding a place with you and, and starting a discussion. And we've had, since we did that, we've had more discussions on how we think we should move forward and a way to do that where everyone has a voice, which I think is important too.
That's a good place to start, I'm not concerned.
I say go for it.
All right, so we're gonna meet, uh...
I say go for it.
Yeah.
I'll work with Dennis and, and Denny, Bruce will establish a committee, we'll meet and then we'll come back to you with some things that we've discussed initially and see how we're gonna continue to, uh, move things forward.
So, um, who do you see being on the committee, the three chiefs?
Seeing the, yeah, the three chiefs.
Well, two, two people from each agency. If a chief says, "Look, I wanna, I don't have the time, I wanna bow out, I wanna put some subordinates in there," something like that.
Yeah.
I had thought on my end, maybe someone in the board of fire engineers, Donnie Richard was interested in, in the process, for instance. So, he might be, he might serve in that capacity at times.
I mean, frankly, there's nothing to stop you from going ahead and taking the initiative to do it in the first place. I think we'd accept anything from you.
To think of is a, is a timeline and when you may wanna shoot for a special town meeting if we're gonna do that.
What needs to be included on that, you know, those sorts of things. I think we can start, you know, as, as Tom said, we thought this would be sort of kickoff to start this process, so...
I think a regular, a, a special town meeting to deal with the mag. When are you retiring?
End of February.
End of January?
February first.
So...
So, to try and get things changed and have a hiring process.
Fire, fire's being an active fire chief. I can't be...
So, either the end of November.
Well, I mean, you're talking Thanksgiving, so maybe the beginning.
Beginning of November.
November.
So, maybe what we'll do is we'll try, we'll meet before the next electance meeting. We'll start to discuss things, we'll get our committee set up. We'll come back to you with some of our initial things or maybe...
Our initial priorities, which we think need to be addressed and...
Maybe when Tom gets back, we can start to think of what...
I mean, my sense is everybody's in agreement.
I think so.
That we want to combine them.
No, that's right.
And that we need a chief. The discussion will be whether strong or weak, but that's, you know, the fire engineers will go and we'll adopt one of those chapters, so, and that's a major step forward and then getting this person to... Well, you, you think it's gonna be a couple of years before we go to Fort Devens if indeed we do?
Yeah, I'm waiting to kinda, I, I would say we're probably in that eighteen-month bracket. You know, once, I met with, with Nathan the other day, we've had some developments in that Bolton has had some major issues in staffing dispatchers. Um, they've lost quite a few people already. Um, so we've made some changes in how we handle nine-one-one calls.
Mm-hmm.
Bolton has always been our backup. Uh, we've always been theirs. We've switched that to Nishova. Um, and in the meantime, Bolton is actually using, uh, Nishova as a, uh, EMD resource now. When they can't staff a dispatcher that's trained in EMD, they're sending the call right to Nishova. So, we're, we're trying to put some things in the works should we have any issues. I don't think so. Um, that's another thing I wanted to discuss when we have the whole board together, some potential things to keep our dispatchers here until we have some type of reward or, or bonus in spending or incentive to stay till the end.
The three selectmen won't be together again till September twenty-first.
Okay, that's fine. We have plenty of time on that, so...
It's on, it's on our horizon, you know, retaining health.
Did we lose, didn't, did we lose nine-one-one with that mini storm that came through?
So, we, we did, um, what happened actually, it had nothing to do with the wires running, they came down. It had to do with our generator. Um, so when our generator kicked on, it only powered, um, I think one or two of the three phases that come in and something...
Yeah, something happened with the transfer of power and we've since had it checked out and...
So, we, we didn't lose it. We were on battery backup. We had about five minutes left on battery backup.
Really?
Till we lost the system. We lost our regular phones.
Where is the generator?
Up behind, next to the saliport.
So, if you had lost all nine-one-one, where would it have gone? Over to Bolton?
It would've gone to Bolton. The problem would have been at that point, uh, we would've lost all nine-one, we also would've lost our phones 'cause our phone system, even though we're not supposed to, we ran an extension cord and plugged it into the battery backup for the nine-one-one system. Um, because with that portion of the building not being powered, we had no, no business lines either.
It worked, didn't it?
It worked. It got us by.
It just is part of the package that we need to look at, the phone system.
Right.
I know Keith has already addressed it with the, uh, the generator service company to come up, look and load it.
They came up with that.
Well, I, when I heard that, I just thought that when we were up at Devens, they were saying that. Their secondary one is physically, what, in Brooklyn? I mean, it's far or south. It's, it's physically away,
It's farther away.
so you wouldn't end up with that same kind of storm thing going through and...
To be the same geographic area.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Unlikely, it was brought down.
Yeah, okay, well.
Well, I'd say yes, yes, on both issues.
Okay, so we'll come back and we'll, uh, we'll come back at the next, with the one that everyone's here, but we'll come back with some information, and we'll start to move this process forward.
Good.
Excellent, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
It is close to eight fifteen, but, uh, let me see. You'd case a true job description, approval, number nine, approval, approved town council review attorney general decision on May twenty-fifteen.
You skipped eight, you know that.
I did?
Yes, and that eight is gonna be more than two minutes, so.
Nine is?
Nine is not. No, eight is.
Eight is, all right, so.
Eight is gonna be more than two minutes.
We'll do the nine.
Yeah.
Approval of town council review attorney general decision of May twenty-fifteen, annual town meeting bylaws, Article thirty-four and thirty-eight.
Thirty-four was a zoning bylaw, and Eloise has already notified the planning board, and they're either gonna revise it or seek town council assistance, you know, on their own, but Article thirty-eight was the new dog bylaw, which is a general bylaw.
I don't understand, I thought she got that from the state.
No, well, no, she got that from Copman and Page.
And the state.
And they tinkered with it. And then, despite the tinkering with it, which we just did a global search and changed into the term animal control officer to dog officer, beside that.
They didn't like other things in it.
No, not, no, that was it, but then the state came back and said, the attorney general's office said that there's other issues, they, they did catch the title change, and they said, we assume we need an animal control law, is it now, animal control officer under the law, but they also flagged some other issues, which did not capture town council's, uh, you know, attention before town meeting, so town council is copied on the attorney general's.
Reply?
Reply, but do you want town council to work through changing the dog bylaw to get it ready for perhaps a su, a special town meeting to fix it?
Is the system working now?
Well.
Well, I think Eloise.
There's a lot of complaints, I know, but.
Eloise changed it because the state changed the laws.
There's something that came in today that actually directly relates to this, that it probably needs to be reviewed. I believe that the new bylaw erases fees that we had before, that.
Went to the library. That was one of the issues.
Yeah, that's one of the issues, mhm.
That the dog, the dog licensing goes to the library.
I believe you've also erased a bunch of other penalties that, um, actually, one was used last Wednesday, which is coming back as a complaint to this office, you'll get that at your next meeting, um, which would've been in effect last Wednesday, under the old bylaw or the current bylaw, but I think are erased from the new version, so there are no financial penalties in the new bylaw. There's some from, through state law, but not the ones that the selectmen used to have, and I don't know if that was intended or not.
There's a lot of questions in that whole thing, even from handling road-killed deer to what have.
That's the job description for the animal control officer, that's different than what was voted at town.
So Article thirty-four was the one about political signs, and that one was outright rejected by the attorney general based on some.
Constitution.
Well, there was some case in Arizona.
Or church.
Somewhere.
So that's not up for discussion?
So that, yeah, that goes back to the planning board.
Yeah.
Thirty-eight, we have to deal with, because it's the dog.
Right.
So, well, why don't we at least have a list of the things that are wrong with it? It's missing fees or fines, it's missing whatever, what needs, yeah, what needs to be done to make it a law that has some.
Well, I don't know if even globally, you just say, we don't even need to have this anymore, because this is supposed to be eight being backed state law, should just be wiped off the books, and then people have to follow state law, but it does get rid of local fees, fines, that had been in place before. One that was levied on the dog off, the dog owner last Wednesday, in fact.
Well, why don't we, why don't you print out the state rejection and list the things that they found wrong with it?
I can't, I'm not doing that legal analysis, I mean, I don't, I can't do that necessarily, I'd be just regurgitating what the attorney general's office is suggesting is wrong with it, I think town council would need to take a crack at fixing it, or maybe you wanna have Tom just look at it when, you know.
Well, why don't we wait till Tom comes back?
Okay, gotcha. Okay, eight fifteen, front and center. School department requests for special town meeting for biomass boiler funding. For the Berlin Memorial School?
Yes, yes.
Sounds exciting.
So, Walter, I do wanna just introduce you to Scott Pashoin, is our new facilities manager.
Hi, how are you?
Bigford is one of the selectmen.
Nice to meet you.
And you've met Judy.
Yep.
Judy I've met.
Hi.
Scott, Mary, nice to meet you.
Thanks, Joe.
And Scott is our new hired facilities manager, he started officially last Monday, but he did join us in a meeting the week before that Judy was able to attend, and it was, I think, um, a very important meeting, and I think we were able to get a lot accomplished. Scott actually has a degree from W P I. in engineering, and so he's been able to look at a lot of different things in Berlin Memorial, which has been great in a very short period of time, so, um, but what we wanted to bring forward to you is, we would like to request, um, a special town meeting to have a warrant for the boiler. We have a proposal, do you have a copy of this for Judy as well as for Walter?
Okay.
Yes, I read it.
I do, I just wanted to explain it before.
You wrote it, didn't you?
That's okay.
Before I needed out of.
No, no, they're flying for this.
This would be good for them to look at, while you do it.
Okay.
And Walter, I don't really think you would've already seen, I know it's on your, uh, website, actually, the feasibility study that was completed.
I did read something, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So just a little bit of background for everyone is, after the town meeting, uh, we did go back to, um, uh, there was concern about the one hundred fifty thousand dollars at town meeting, um, and how that was spent, and, and, as you know. And so what we did was, we went back and spoke to, um, Dylan Boiler, Dylan Boiler, and then we also had another, um, company, um, it's who we use at Tejanto, sorry, yep, that's.
A S C.
A S C, is the company that we use at Tejanto, because we were in another opinion about the boiler. And, um, what they stated was that, even though you could repair the parts for about fifty thousand or so, the problem is that the boiler itself is already eighteen and a half years old, so that was advised to not make that, to make that decision, because the, the way, I love the way Scott used the analogy this afternoon, when we were talking about it, is that, you know, it's kind of like an older vehicle, when you start putting money into it, you're always gonna be putting money into it, so it becomes more of a, um, less of an investment.
And there were some questions on whether you could even get the parts.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, so I'm gonna let Scott talk a little bit, what we did do was, we met about a week and a half ago now, we met with, um, people that completed a Sapphire grant, because also since the town meeting, we said, well, gee, let's look at other options, if we can't look at getting a new boiler that matches this boiler, and we can't do, um, the, you know, if we don't end up doing the parts roots, what's another option, and we were able to get, um, a feasibility study done through the Sapphire grant, through an organization, and actually Judy, uh, knows the, the people very well, with all the green community and so forth, that she's done in Berlin. So we met, Scott met, Judy was with us, we also had, um, Mr. Blair from Berlin, he also joined us, and Tom was with us as well, and so we asked all the questions we possibly could from a feasibility study, to get our answers, um, you know, our questions answered. So Scott, if you wanna get kind of what we're proposing.
Essentially, we need a boiler. We have one down.
Right.
So, um, the difference just between a boil and a pellet in cost after grants, a pellet boiler, is roughly ten thousand dollars. However, I think the most important piece of this is that if we replace it, if we were able to replace it exactly the way it is, our heating costs will be the same going forward. I've been calling it, if we go into a pellet, it's an investment, uh, the savings is projected at roughly twenty-three thousand dollars a year. So any money we spend, not only, any extra money will be recouped very short order, in months versus years. So I think, uh, I'm totally looking at it as an investment, over a period of twenty-five years over the lifespan, six hundred thousand in savings.
Is it twenty-five-year lifespan?
Yes.
Versus, how long was this one?
Well, this boiler is eighteen and a half years old.
Was it eighteen and a half?
Oh, that boiler should have lasted longer, I don't know if it's at water, hot water or something.
I think it's the water, partly the water quality, and partly that, that boiler, along with the town of Hudson and other towns, was a.
Problem?
A De Soto, uh, an Edison, rather, an Edison boiler.
Yeah, okay.
Additionally.
Let, let me tell you right now, already, it's, you know, it's kinda out, I might've said it, jeez, we're gonna have a pellet stove, oh, jeez, there are rumors around, you know, all the pellets are no good, you know, all this other stuff, so we've gotta be, lay it out very clearly.
We had a very good conversation with the Department of Energy Resources, and I had similar concerns.
And they're advocating it, of course.
Of course.
Strongly.
Of course, they are, but they're actually putting money behind what they're saying also. Uh, my biggest concern was, I remember two thousand thirteen, it was a shortage of pellets, so that my very first question is, was toward that effect, and, uh, the shortage was, was in bagged pellets, so bulk pellets delivered on a truck.
Okay.
There was not a shortage. Massachusetts has dedicated, uh, between Energy Resources and another, another, um, department within Massachusetts, sixty million dollars to it, uh, what they call thermal renewable, um, so things like the solar isn't including in there, and some, uh, geothermal, some things like that. Primarily, most of the money right now, uh, from B O E R, Energy Resources, uh, out of that thirty million, uh, I guess, what do you tell me, most of that money was going toward pellet-type, um, installs, and they're building out the industry to support that. Now, there is, they are there, um, you know, Jaffrey, New Hampshire, an hour from here, is a major, uh, developer of pellets, so they are investing millions of dollars, two, three million, I think, into a established company, main energy systems, to develop a, another, uh, company or branch down here in Massachusetts.
Oh, really?
They've set guidelines for quality of pellets, uh, because they are looking for a quality pellet with a certain moisture and a certain, you know, density, and, and the efficiencies are based on the quality of the pellet, so they, uh, they put that in place. Um, they are helping to, uh, build out trucks to properly, uh, manage, you know, ship those pellets. So they're putting their money with them all, they really are putting significant effort behind this, and their intention really is to build out this industry. Renewable essentially means that they, um, hypothetically, in a, in a simple sense, could grow the trees or whatever it is as quickly as they, as they use them.
Right.
I don't know the details on how they are doing that, but they, they do have some guidelines, and that has to be part of their grant when they're giving money to.
Well, wood is growing substantially faster than it should be in harvested Massachusetts, and has been for a number of years, but there's a lot of slash and trash wood that are going to waste and stuff, so maybe that's it, but.
There is a lot of that side of it.
On the overall picture, one should be a little concerned about, you know, I go to, go to Chile or something, everything is eucalyptus, this imported tree, fast-growing, and it's just horrible, you know, so I hate to see, it's like the Midwest growing corn for fuel and stuff, but it'd be interesting to see where it goes, we're smart enough not to let it get out of hand, I guess, so.
Well, they are, they, they're putting a lot behind it, like I said, they're really building out the, I mean, the industry's there, I don't wanna make it sound like the industry's not there, but they, they wanna expand it, they wanna invest a lot more money into pellet.
So the bottom line is the fuel source, you feel pretty confident about?
I was, my biggest concern was the fuel source, and after sitting down with them for an hour, whatever, we were there, um, I did feel much more comfortable, I also had additional conversations with them after that, just to make sure, and I did some research on the actual manufacturers, I mean, there's, there's a handful of, um, of, uh, retail pellet shippers, but, uh, it really comes down to a couple, uh, actual manufacturers of the pellets, and those are both regulated with Massachusetts, so that they can get their investments, so. Uh, and they're looking to build another one right now, so they have, they have a lot in their pipeline. So I, I feel comfortable with what I've learned over the last couple of weeks.
Where are their installations similar to what you want?
Uh, I looked at one right up at, uh, Wachusett.
Community college?
Mountain, no, um.
The college is a biomass.
They do, there's different types, so.
I think it's chipped.
Yeah, that, I did look at a chipped one, too, actually, up at Narragansett School, and was it Templeton, I think, I could get Temple, Templeton.
Ashburn, yeah, that's one.
But that one was, that one was just, the size compared to ours was really not a good comparison, for me. But I, I stopped and saw just a single, one, one about a third of the size we would be doing, uh, the Department of, um, D C R, is that Conservation and Recreation?
Yeah, yeah.
They installed one, they had some tremendous successes, I couldn't believe how small it was, so I, I really learned, I got to talk to the woman, yeah, that was.
Where was it?
This is, uh, right, right above Wachusett Mountain ski area, there's a little pull out there, a little parking lot, and a little information booth, or information, uh, whatever you wanna call it.
So does it generate heat or electricity, or?
Uh, it generates hot water.
Yeah.
Which provides the heat, so you can do that a couple of ways, I mean, at our school at Berlin.
For a bludge building?
Yes, I mean, you can do, I mean, these things run in series, so we're looking at, I mean, the proposal on the table right now is a specific brand, but it would be three of them running in series, which gives us, um, I mean, and that system is meant to primarily handle the whole school, the oil, the current oil burner there will kick in during peak hours to, um, assist, and we calculated all that, but they calculated all that into, into the figures here, so that is all included there also. Um, I do wanna, they have one, I think it's in, in Greens, I don't know, Green, it's another one, but they have a s, something similar to what we're looking at in the series, so I do have an intention to go up and visit that facility also.
So you're an engineer, you've discussed it with the state people, who advocated, of course.
Yes.
And you've visited the site.
Yes.
The people, how old is that one that you visited?
Uh, the one I visited was, the big one, was, uh, three years old, but I mean, they, you know, they, they were investing three million, it came out with three point eight million, it's just not, no comparison.
Okay.
The other one had only been there one year, or a year and a half, I guess, um, and, uh, they loved it, they had some issues the very first year, um, they didn't have a gauge on the silo that holds the pellet, they ran out of pellets, um, they didn't empty the ash, you know, which a process would be roughly once every week, or.
Yeah.
Once every two weeks.
Yeah.
So it shut down automatically, they didn't know why, so.
Makes you grow fertilizer, by the way.
It does, I've heard mixed things, it can, if you, as long as you don't spread it too thick.
No, it's, it's good fertilizer, elk line.
You could go, give it to the community garden.
Yeah.
So, talk about cost, and what's the total cost, what does the state give us, and what is it gonna cost us?
There's a breakdown.
I will, yeah, I'm just.
Talk about it anyway.
Yeah, so you know what I did, I mean, if we just replace the boiler, that's what if we just replace the boilers with that first line, just replace it with exactly what's there. You're looking at the forty-six thousand dollars there. Now, we also have, uh, two hot water tanks at that school. One of them is leaking water, it's corroded on the bottom of the tank, it's leaking water, it needs to be replaced. I got an estimate today, uh, I didn't see it physically, but over the phone I was told it's sixty-two hundred dollars. So I included that there because essentially that needs to be changed also. The reason I included it is because with this new system, there'll be a thermal storage tank, so we wouldn't even, those tanks would be removed, both of them. So that's where I came up with the fifty-two thousand dollars, if we replace it exactly what we have there now. Now, the other problem is that second hot water tank, which is the same age, and, uh, what, what appears in my limited, um, understanding so far with the hard water or whatever it may be, I mean, that one's at the end of its life, whether it lasts another year or five years, who knows? But it's at the end of its life. So I just threw that in just for a little, just for conversation, um, but I did my calculations with the fifty-two thousand.
Yeah.
So as you go down, uh, this entire project, just for the install itself, is approximately two hundred thousand by their estimates on that feasibility study. So, um, actually, before we even get there, we have to do some next stages, uh, engineering, your request for proposal. Uh, that would cost us, uh, approx, at a max, twenty thousand dollars, uh, twenty-two thousand dollars. But we have a ten thousand, we have access to a ten thousand dollar grant. So that would bring that max cost down to twelve thousand, that's what that first number is, twelve thousand.
Yeah.
The range there, Walter, is anywhere between two to twelve thousand.
Mm-hmm.
That's what it would cost us.
That pellet boiler is roughly two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, eight hundred dollars is their estimate, their initial estimate.
Yeah.
So this fifty thousand, two hundred represents twenty-five percent of that.
So.
Because the state would pay the other seventy-five percent.
So it sounds like we ought to let this go to town meeting and let this be discussed and a vote taken on it. I think it's kind of an interesting thing for the town to be discussing.
I certainly do.
We're not going to make the decision tonight, somebody else is going to make it, so.
I just have one question, what if you don't get this grant? What are you going to do? I mean, because I think it's a valid question, they said that there was limited money available.
I think Judy, what would happen is, um, I mean, I would be in touch with them regularly, so I get a feel for, you know, because there are other competing organizations and, and not, there will be others that get grants also, but it is limited, so I will keep in touch with them and keep abreast of that. And they do also know our emergency situation, and we're actually hoping we may be able to fast track our process for getting approval, which ultimately has to be signed off by the governor.
Right, but I'm just saying, you need to have a plan B, because this is your backup boiler. And you know, the former's almanac says, we're going to have another.
I'm ignoring that.
No, I mean, that would be my only thing, is that, is that at town meeting, you need to know what.
I think the backup, that is a great question, because the backup is either, we need to understand, will they fund it again next year, right? So do you hold off and go for it? Because I think, long term, this is a really good option, right? Or do we just say, you know what, it's too risky, let's fix what we got? I think that's our default position, because this isn't really replacement, this first one, it's, it's really fix what we have, and that would get us through, I don't know, maybe another seven years or, or ten years at the, at the outset.
Then I suggest when you write your warrant article, that you make it so that you could do either of those two things.
Give them, I'll give them some more thought too.
You know, obviously, your legislators are important, you log in for this, I think they would be happy to have this in their district to work on this, and our former secretary would, would, um, maybe help out, would talk about it.
And, and, you know, I will say that even though, you know, we put this in for the replacement, I'm, I'm really hesitant to say, let's replace the parts, because we know that if it breaks, there's a good chance they can't replace those other parts.
Hmm, yeah, yeah, we're just band-aiding.
We're just, we're just band-aiding, so then we're going to come back to the town again next year and say, well, that didn't work, folks, we gave you fifty, thanks for the fifty thousand, but then it worked, so now we need, now we really need a new one. You know, I don't think that's sending a right message to the town either.
It doesn't seem as though the state would let this fail, does it?
Fail in what sense?
In not giving us the.
If thing, if you install it in the school, they're advocating it, they're funding it, and the thing doesn't work outright, and the pellets don't work, you know, the fuel doesn't come in, it, it would seem that there would be a lot of support.
They actually, uh, have some interaction with these systems after they install them, where, where obligated to provide, provide them with some numbers so that they can show that their systems have been.
You are linked to them, to their grant money, to tell you.
Yeah.
No, my, I mean, my point, Walter, is that when we were in this meeting, they said they only had a limited amount of money available for this grant round. So what would they do if they don't get it? And, and like Tom said, is, is there more money?
Actually, we don't know.
He made it sound like.
They think there's more, they think there is, but they haven't gotten confirmation.
But I asked him that question, and they didn't know for sure yet.
Yeah.
I, I mean, there's a couple of things that happen, I, I can, um, I've just been trying to get the schools up and going, but right after that, I can really dive into the application, get it, get it completed, get it out to them, let them know our, remind them of our urgency, try and fast track this, maybe with the help of some representatives or something of the state, if, if, if we think that that could help. And, um, really, me stay on it, and make sure that we're moving this forward very quickly. Uh, I mean, ideally want this in before winter.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, so Mary did some special town meeting dates, did you see them?
I saw those.
Yeah.
But it looks like the twenty-fourth doesn't work for all of you, because you have too much going on.
Two sidewalks, and you have the, the state coming, Walter, for the Ross Dam flood control.
Yeah, does it have to be on a Monday night? It's a special town meeting, you could have it anytime, you could have it that Wednesday night.
Judy asked for some dates, and that's what Eloise gave, but I didn't ask for non-Mondays night.
Well, I don't know that.
I mean, I, frankly, we, we can't, we can't sacrifice, do any selectmen meeting, we don't have enough work to do, so we could have it on a different night.
Well, and we can't open it tonight unless we have a date. We have the twenty-eighth, the fifth.
Yeah.
And the nineteenth, we could do a selectmen's meeting on another night.
That's true, we can do it that way.
Fifth and the nineteenth of October?
Yes, so the twenty-eighth of September, the fifth of October, and the nineteenth of October.
Want to do the twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
They want to get.
Imagine.
Obviously, yeah.
I won't be here, but.
Oh, well, I'm sure.
I make a motion that we have a special town meeting on Monday, September twenty-eighth at seven P M.
Seven thirty typically, no, for special, it could be seven, it could be seven.
I think seven thirty is seven, we have our special, and seven thirty is the special, I mean, the annual.
Seven is, yeah.
Um, and we need to open the warrant, and when are we going to close it? So if we open it tonight.
There's a calendar there.
I don't want to see a bunch of big zoning changes and everything else being stuck on this thing that you go to an annual town meeting, that's all I'm worried about.
Well, I mean, I don't mind the zoning, because they all look at, stuck at the end of town meeting, people leave, but. Today's the twenty-four.
Yeah.
So then, it's a week to the thirty-first. Does any of this have anything, Eloise just needs to be able to have open voter registration.
Ten days before, and I need to get the warrants out to people's homes fourteen days before.
Fourteen days before.
You know, Julie, I don't have to be here, why don't you have it in a couple of weeks? I mean, with this as the main issue.
Because it has to be, it has to go out fourteen days before.
Yes, I mean, I'd get it to the printer, so I mean, they have to have the language in.
So that would be the fourteenth, and Eloise, so we could open it tonight and close it on the seventh.
Yeah.
Gives you two weeks.
It gives you two weeks to come up with some wording. So if we open it tonight, close it September eighth, because the seventh is Labor Day. And then it'll be on, close it, yeah, at eight P M.
And the meeting will be on the twenty-eighth?
On September twenty-eighth at seven P M.
Okay, I'll second that motion. So the motion been made and seconded, to hold a special town meeting on September twenty-eighth at seven.
P M.
P M, seven thirty, seven thirty P M, the warrant for that meeting to be opened tonight, and to be closed two weeks from tonight.
September eighth at eight P M.
September eighth at eight P M.
Because it's got to be closed.
Any further discuss, discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Now, your work begins.
You will have a selling, you will have to do some selling, silly rumors, but I mean, boy, you explain it, and, you know, the, uh, I, I mean, frankly, the idea of a biofuel furnace appeals to a lot of people, too.
Well, you know, I, I'm only talking about it from a financial perspective, but there's certainly some responsibility perspectives on, on, you know, contributing, limiting the contribution of CO2 to the environment.
Yeah, that's right, I mean, and I think you should talk about that.
I will.
Because people, people are concerned about that.
I think the other piece that's a great advantage that Julie brought forward too, is by having boil source and pellet source, if, say, one year the pellets are really high when you go out to bid, then you use oil as your primary.
There you go.
If oil's high to bid that year, then you use the pellet as your primary.
You might want to check your oil share, because it's gone way down.
I know, but that's what I mean, but at least.
That's what I was looking at at home, it was like, whoa, maybe I don't want to burn.
Two different oil sources, two different heating sources can help you on the, on the bidding process.
Yeah, it gives you some flexibility.
Walter, just a word, I was thinking about it, but, you know, the state's perspective is less tonnage of CO2 with the environment, that's what they're mainly focused, that's their goal.
Right, and that means a lot to a lot of people, that'll, that'll, that's good, great.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you all, nice to meet you.
See ya.
Can you get your blankets in here? Might just relax?
Back to number eight, I guess. As for human officers, okay, A, town bond question about public information request, refer O P M for R F P. Uh, the operation, what is that, oversight?
Oper, no, it's proc, my god, owner, project manager.
Okay. So somebody has challenged whether or not we're qualified to even put it out to bid.
No, I think somebody wanted to know who the O P M was for the project.
Well, they're also insinuating in their email that the law requires it for any project over a hundred thousand, so they're saying, who is your O P M?
I, I read the law, and the law does say that if you have qualified in-house personnel, you don't need to have an O P M.
And we can make that judgment.
Well, I think that they need to provide the documentation so that we can say that we feel we have qualified personnel, and that we do not need to hire an owner, project manager, and I haven't seen any resumes or anything.
There is a resume that he sent, he emailed, and I thought I shared that with everybody.
Well, yeah.
Tom did.
Not all that impressive, but, uh.
Do you want me to put my, yes.
It might be. You know, this is, uh, kind of limited in the scope of the, it looks like, um, facade instruction and stuff, and, uh, I don't see, is education on that? I don't think so.
No.
Well, we could just go with it and say that it is, and what's the worst thing that can happen? This is just putting it out to bid, he won't be, this doesn't mean that he'll, we'll have in-house oversight of the actual construction. So we will be hiring somebody, so to avoid another Berlin Memorial School fiasco, we'll hire someone qualified.
I think they were talking about hiring a clerk of the works.
Right.
Well, I mean, the worst that can happen is that, um, this, this, uh, company that keeps asking that question will go to the state and say that they don't think that we have qualified personnel.
Then we have to get someone to rebid it. How much of a hassle was it putting, is it out yet?
Yes, it went out, um, on the eighteenth of August.
I guess you could just put a bid out for an O P M, which is what they were looking for.
So.
So a public agency may assign an existing employee to service the owner's project manager if they meet and exceed the minimum qualifications as outlined in subsection A. I guess my only other one is that, is he's not actually a town employee.
Well, that's a flexible term, because committee members and board members can be considered in some instances, under some definitions of the law, employee, like ethics, for example, or special ethics.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with them doing it.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, at least for this piece of it.
So am I. So, no action?
Well, they're looking for advice on what, how to answer her.
So I think, um, they're either going to have to wait two weeks for Tom to come up with some lawyerly written response, or for us to come up with something saying that, that under, do you think it would suffice to say that under chapter, Mass General Law, Chapter one forty-nine, Section forty-four A, one and a half, that a public, that a town may assign an existing employee to service the O P M, and we feel that the employee meets or exceeds the minimum qualifications, because he, you have to be an engineer, and he.
Doesn't say.
Doesn't actually say that he's an engineer, engineer, does it? I thought that one of the things was that they had to be an engineer.
Mary, can you craft up what Judy just said, but first of all, find out if he has to be an engineer, and find out if Tom is an engineer? And if he is, write up what Judy just, um, read there, and send it to us.
No, it doesn't actually say. It's in that, that, that.
Tom submits that that is sufficient, an answer for her to show qualifications, but he's not applying the law like Judy asked, you know, that, so Keith is asking for a procurement decision on whether that's sufficient or not, what Tom forwarded as a resume. I can ask Tom again, point blank, are you an engineer?
I'm pretty sure it said you had to be an engineer. I'll go look and make sure that that's, there was a list of things that they had to be in order to qualify.
So, um, do you want to make a motion on that contingent upon you doing the research and getting something done? Or does it have to be out that soon, I think it does.
Yeah, I think it does. Uh, let's make a motion to send a letter to that company that we feel that we have qualified in-house personnel, that we have in-house personnel qualified to act as the O P M for the design portion of this project.
Based on this chapter?
Based on, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'll second that, um, any further discussion? Motion made and seconded to, um, send a letter to this company declaring that we feel we have in-house personnel capable of doing the O P M, executing the O P M responsibilities for this portion of the project. And quote that chapter and verse, or whatever it was that Judy, it's in here, right?
Forty-four, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's all going to be contingent on that he actually does meet all the.
Contingent upon that he meets the qualifications, you're going to talk to Tom about it, Mary?
Yes.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
B, designer selection board, eight, twelve, fifteen, requests for designer evaluation form.
That's just, since you came, addressed the selectmen, I'm, I'm putting, we're talking about procurement on the same project, so I put it in there. The designer evaluation form isn't due at this point, but this is just a reminder that that must be submitted back to the state.
By when, would you say?
They put a deadline in there, then so many days.
I would like you to submit designer recently advertised, uh, issue dated eight, twelve, Miss Highway Barn, please.
Is it seven days?
Please forward the schedule of this project with an expected occupancy date. I would like to remind you, submit a designer evaluation form for your recently advertised projects, dated eight, twelve, New Municipal Highway Barn. I don't see a time when they. Did you see it in here, Mary?
No. Within seventy days of occupancy date of the project, but this is a form, letter, and it jumbles around, so I'm not sure if they actually typed this correctly. But it does say that you need to, remind you, you need to submit a designer evaluation form within seventy days of the occupancy date of the project. Please forward the schedule for this project with the expected occupancy date.
You, you need a designer form that.
That's why it doesn't make sense to me, but I, I don't know the procurement law.
When it gets seventy days of the occupancy, it's going to be long gone by the designer phase of it.
Well, it says, please forward this schedule for this project with the expected occupancy date, and at the completion of the schematic design phase, the agency must provide the designer with a written pre, preliminary evaluation for informational purposes. And that has to be no later than thirty days after completion of the schematic design phase. At the completion of the construction phase, you have to provide the designer with a completed design phase evaluation form. So after you're done constructing it, you have to fill out this form, is this through D C A M? Yeah, yeah, to the designer selection board in D C A M. So if they've done a crummy job, you'll know it after construction. All right, so we don't have to do anything on that right now.
No, we're not.
Number ten, discussion regarding liquor license fee for Liquor Barn Highland Commons, vote. And we discussed that briefly today, Mary, you want to talk about it?
Liquor Barn says that since they had a license transferred to them.
Oh, that they don't owe us any money?
That they don't owe us any money. No, Matt said, he called today and said, if in any way, shape, or form, this discussion goes off the rails, he's willing to come down here with two checks tomorrow in pay. But the question is just, you know, what do you think? I don't know that there's been a liquor license transfer for any kind of precedent to look back on.
I think it's a new license for them.
I, yeah.
So it might be a transfer, but our fee is for liquor licenses, right? Does it say?
Well, we don't have what other towns have, which is an application for it, so there's been no application for anybody for any Cabela's or liquor licenses, or even this class-two license, we don't collect that from. or liquor licenses, or even this class two license. We don't collect that from anybody. And generally, when they're getting a new license, like the motor vehicle tonight, they're paying, he pays twenty-five dollars. Cabela's paid twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars. They, if they're a new, but this is a transfer of a license. I don't know if there's been a situation where we've transferred a license, although there's another one coming up. TGI Fridays is going to be transferring its license pretty soon.
We did, we transferred the license from Liquor Store by Five Corners, Dag- Dag- Dagalot's.
Yeah, Daniel.
We transferred their license.
To a new owner.
Right.
Okay.
So did we charge them?
That I don't know, because I didn't know that there was any history of a transfer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because they got, I don't know what it was called before, but it was a transfer.
Well, the long and the short of it is, Matt would rather pay, this only came this afternoon after I finalized the agenda, because the sale is going to be happening on Thursday, and he wants there to be no reason why he can't continue to operate. So if he has to take all alcohol off the shelf, he wants to be able to continuously be able to do beer and wine without any glitch, and so, you know, he's just making sure that there's no misunderstanding. He wants to pay if that's the requirement. He understands, he's, he's understanding Berlin Liquors must pay, but Berlin Liquors paid before.
What is the fee?
Twelve fifty.
Twelve fifty.
One thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
That's uh.
Not twelve dollars.
Liquor Barn challenged that they would not have to pay again. Matt Senni says, I'll make the problem go away. I'll pay.
But that seems unfair.
The Liquor Barn is getting a license. They should pay.
It's, and I say I'm posing the question to you all.
I think they should pay.
That's the same thing as though, let's say they gave up their license, so we've got a license that we can sell to somebody, we sell it to the Liquor Barn.
Does Berlin Liquors pay for their new license also? Because the reality is Matt Senni's paying these. It sounds like Liquor Barn's not paying.
Right.
It's not gonna be coming from Liquor Barn. It's gonna be coming from Matt Senni. So if we're talking about fairness, I don't know. Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, I mean, in fairness, he shouldn't pay, but if he wants to pay just to make the, make it go away, but I'm not gonna say he shouldn't pay because he'd be paying twice.
Has anybody contacted, should we contact Liquor Barn and tell them they owe us some money?
Liquor Barn's attorney contacted me to say, on second thought, because I told them both.
Yeah.
You'll get the licenses assigned by the selectmen once you have.
Is there anything in the paperwork that they did that says they have to pay Liquor Barn? Did they not sign the paperwork? Where's their paperwork?
It's a pretty hefty stack over there.
Bring it on over.
Okay.
That's annoying, since they caused all these other problems with Liquor Store at BJ's and.
Yeah, it doesn't, they get no license free.
Yeah, well, whatever, they paid Senni's. Well, we can still give Senni's their new liquor license.
Well.
Can't we?
His deal with them is that they close on this. It has to be simultaneous.
Right. I just don't want to, because Matt's paying both of them, say, oh, we don't have to pay the second one, because that sets a precedence for any other transfer that we have.
You know, we don't have a form. We tell all applicants that they must go to the ABCC website and download the form that the state requires. We don't have one. We do for class one, two, and three motor vehicles, but we don't have a separate application. In fact, someone just asked me that again about TGI Fridays. Do you have a separate set of paperwork we must fill out for transfer of a liquor license? And I said, no. So there's no local.
So there's no local form that got signed saying that they would pay twelve fifty?
Not for the transfer of liquor.
Where does the twelve fifty come from then?
It's the fee that we charge for.
Is it, do we have it in, like, a town, is it on our bylaws?
Like a schedule, like the building inspectors or the electrical and plumbing inspectors. I said to Peggy, is there a schedule of all selectmen fees? No. But it is that. The history is that everyone pays it, whether it's an all alcohol or beer or wine, because the wine seller pays twelve fifty too, even though they don't sell full alcohol. But that's what it is for everybody. So the history is that.
So it sounds like it's something maybe we need to have a application, since we're, we're not just, you know, with our two liquor stores anymore. We're gonna be having.
There should be a fee schedule for, um, yeah. That includes an application fee, because we can go through all of this, and they can get rejected from the ABCC. The ABCC part is just one piece of paper on top. We had to do all of this to get there.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't reimburse, but pays the town for some of the effort.
Well, we could ask our lawyer to send their lawyers, well, Matt wants it this.
They close in on Thursday, and he wants to make sure we're going into Labor Day weekend. He has to be able to sell liquor, so. Is what he's saying.
Well, then I guess he's gonna have to pay both of them. But I would like to write a letter to Liquor Barn
Right.
and tell them that it's bad faith, or, I don't know, something like that, that they feel they can suddenly decide that they don't need to pay that twelve fifty.
What, what if Mary was to call him tomorrow, because they've got as much at stake as Matt, and say, oh, they don't have as much at stake.
No, he wants to.
Yeah.
They don't have a building to open the store.
Right, 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 right. We've issued, we haven't issued it yet.
No.
Tell them if they don't pay for it, we won't issue it.
It, they, it was signed.
Oh, did we?
Yeah, well, no, they're signed, but they're contingent on payment. That's what the email was. So, Tom Galvin and I were talking about this. How do you do this? Liquor Barn, you can pay, then you have the all liquor license. That means, Matt, you must immediately stop selling all alcohol. You can, you can do beer and wine, but you technically have nothing until you pay, and then you can do beer and wine. So you see what I'm saying? Liquor Barn paid, they have the all alcohol license. That means, Matt Senni, you have no license.
But if Liquor Barn, if Liquor Barn doesn't pay, then Matt's still got a license to sell.
That's correct. All alcohol.
But he wants.
But they're doing the transaction on Thursday.
He wants the money. That's really the key to it. I don't know how much they're getting, but, but he wants the cash from the sale.
So when we issue a license, the owner of that can turn around and sell it, particularly if it's the last one available.
Pending your approval. It'd be contingent on your approval, because they have no right to sell the license. It's, you all decide if you're gonna grant it or not.
Yeah, but if, I mean, we've got a number of, we've got two licenses, let's say, for conversation purposes, and they're issued. And one person wants to sell all apart of one, wants to sell it to someone, and that, somebody else comes in to us, we're not have to refuse them. So they can command, it's almost putting it out to auction, isn't it?
No, because it's a private deal. You aren't, it wasn't being put out to bid.
No, I know that.
Yeah.
But essentially, if two people wanted it, and there was only one, the holder of it could keep, make a bargain, get the most money, and then they pay their twelve fifty here, and we issue it. Interesting. Well, um.
I think Matt's just gonna have to pay them both, but I still want, would like to register my, um.
Opinion.
Yes. The selectmen's opinion.
Right.
That.
Selectmen's or yours? I mean, do you want to vote?
Yeah, well, I mean, we didn't have to vote it. I agree. Well, you want to make a motion to send a letter to the.
To the Liquor Barn and saying that, in good faith, we transferred this liquor license pending a payment, or.
Yeah.
And, and they have now.
Reneged.
Reneged on the agreement. And it does not show them being a good community member, or something to those, you know, to that effect.
Yeah.
And that we are disappointed in their actions.
Hey, that's great. Rock the cuff. Why are you gonna have a mean streak in you to come up with something like that?
Why, thank you.
That's a backhand compliment.
Okay.
Well, I don't think that was a compliment.
No, no, no.
I think that was a front-handed insult.
Okay, so, but in a term, Matt should also pay both.
Well, if, if that's, if he wants this done.
Yeah.
Then he's gonna have to do it. Otherwise, I, I cannot see giving them a license for nothing. But I think if you, in your free time, can come up with, like, a fee schedule and an application, then we need to have applications for all this stuff and have them sign it, so there won't be any more of this, I don't think we should be paying you twelve, twelve hundred.
This is just a bridge we've never crossed. There's all kinds of one-day liquor license app, there is actually an application that I ripped off from another town for the one-day nonprofit liquor license application. That's the only application we have. We don't have one for.
I think this is new territory, because we've never had, you know, we're gonna have more restaurants. We're gonna have a hotel that's gonna want a liquor license, I'm sure, too. So I think we need to have some sort of town application.
Well, we're pretty limited on how many applications we could have, how many licenses, right?
Well, don't we have more restaurants?
All alcohol retail, they're all out there, Liquor Barn and Dagalot's.
But the restaurants.
Beer and wine, there's room, and the restaurants, there's room.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I think it's like up to twenty-four on the restaurants, just swinging the number off the top of my head, so.
All right. Well, we're forced to do what Judy just suggested.
We let a whole bunch of fees go under the water here on the application fees. There's been five this year.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's more in the pipeline.
Okay.
All right.
In your spare time, come up with an application for that.
Oh, yes, we'll do that. Okay, we can do that.
Okay. Is that discussion over?
Yes.
But I'm in favor of sending that letter, by the way, so we don't need to vote on that. Update regarding conservation easement signage concerning Therians. She came into the Conservation Commission meeting. I just wanted to let you know about it, that's all. And actually, the right of way, she took it to her lawyer, and the right of way says that the grantee has a right to allow people to walk on the property, and that includes skiing and snowshoeing and to ride horses. Says nothing about dogs, and her attorney's position is.
Really?
Yeah. That um, she doesn't want the dogs on there, and so the way we're gonna handle it is just no dogs on that.
That's too bad.
Yeah, it is in a way. The one problem, you know, the problem she's had, Judy, she had some professional dog walkers. They go out and they turn loose six or seven dogs, and, and they keep two on a leash, and they get down, and then she's training kids on horses, and the dogs are running around, and so I can understand her position on that.
Oh, I, I, I mean, it's too bad that people have abused the privilege of.
Yeah.
And it's probably not even people necessarily from our town.
I, I think most of, I think that's largely used by outer towns, which is perfectly all right, but uh, okay, so that, that miscellaneous correspondence.
So the treasurer email about IRS withholding was that he wants to pay the IRS.
Yes.
Now, does he need our permission to do that?
No, the town meeting vote left the power with the treasurer. But you'd have to sign the warrant next week, so, well, you're not here, right?
No, I'm here. Walter's not here.
Walter's not here next week.
Coming for next two meetings.
Okay. So that's, I guess, the degree that he wanted to make sure you knew that there'd be a large sign going out next week, so, warrant.
Council on Aging, Senior Work Off, Senior Veteran Work Off Program is going very well.
Peggy sent the listing of who's been matched up with what jobs as of this afternoon, so that's in there.
Good.
The vans here.
The vans here. Well, the treasurer's memo about police and fire anti-smoking and the right to know, I guess is something that should be put on an agenda at some point, don't you think?
Agenda this?
Mm-hmm.
Do you, later in the fall, maybe?
Yeah. We'll just keep pushing everything.
Okay.
Well, we are back to weekly meetings.
After Labor Day.
After Labor Day, so.
Well, how's the incident on the nursing squad going?
The company says that they don't have, at least the last time I talked to them, which was last week, they had no claim from that EMT. So they don't, they, if nothing happens in sixty days, there's nothing. It closes.
Um, on Reese's sign, I copied you on my email to Keith. We voted to name it, but there was no budget for the sign, you know? And I talked with the people in Worcester, and they thought they might be able to help, but anyway, I think Keith should deal with them on that. And they wanted, they want the state seal on it, and they recommend a, an aluminum sign, cast aluminum sign, Reese circle, six-inch letter. It's gonna be about thirty by.
Whoa.
Two feet. Well, it won't even show up, you know.
Is it going in the ground, or?
Right in the middle of the circle.
Circle?
Yeah. And a state seal on it in Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the cost was, and the cost was?
Well, I, I've, I've only sought one bid on it, but you know, I just told Keith to chase it down a little bit and get some figures on it, and I gave him the name of the person from the state to talk to, so we tried see if we can get some funding for it up there, if we can get it done. I would like to do it this fall.
Well, uh, let's see. So the Maya Train the Trainer for Discrimination, I'm thinking about it. If I took it, then I need to train everybody in.
Train the trainer.
Then I would train them, train the employees here. And if you train, if you take it, you get a two percent decrease in your insurance, and then if you train seventy-five percent of the employees, you get another two percent.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. We'll see.
Anybody else who would do it?
Well, Dennis and I are the.
Sexual harassment.
Sexual harassment, discrimination. We both have taken the discrimination class before. All right, I don't know. Do you have anything else?
No.
I'll be sipping a lion and eating tapas in Barcelona. I'll be taking each meeting.
I may be doing a half day on Thursday, if that's all right, to attend to the lunch thing.
They start school?
The Wednesday before Labor Day. So they do a short week, then they do another short week. Yes, and then just get their teeth licked up.
Ah.
Anxious.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second motion remains, can do adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.